Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty four. Like to call the meeting to order and if you please stand and join me for an invocation of the prayer for elected leadership. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits. Who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures. Welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment? Seeing none, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from December nineteenth of twenty twenty three?
So moved. Well, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. We have the motion to approve minutes from December twenty first, twenty twenty three.
So. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. And do I have a motion to approve the minutes from December twenty sixth of twenty twenty three?
So the second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner?
Have anything today?
Okay. Mr. You just.
I don't think you may be there.
Okay, I don't either. New business this morning, the executive session. Do you have, do you email?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
That's correct. How many sessions we had?
Three, I believe.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at ten oh two AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners and HR.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
She is.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Brilliant goodness.
Okay, then we are back to an open session. And we will do a non-elected executive session, forty minutes, please.
Forty?
Yep. County attorney, HR, and commissioners.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session. At ten eighteen AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in forty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners, HR, and county attorney.
Yeah, second.
You might add Mark just in case. Cause I'm pretty sure I just wrote the attorney. Say something.
I wasn't told to add him.
Will you verify that?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
I would get her permission, cause I was told commissioners and HR.
Who did she help else?
She said.
Yeah, she would like him. That's sorry, that's why I. I wasn't trying to over.
Listen again, it's commissioners and attorney, and director of HR. Yes. Okay, say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes. I'll leave that up to you guys.
I'm good.
We're gonna follow up next week.
Next week.
Okay.
You know these bad.
You can have them or I'll take them back, whichever you like.
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. No Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, Department.
He was, he was.
Pay some back to the workers. Uh, Joe's coming in. He should be coming in. Thank you. Uh, he needed ten minutes, so like eleven oh five. I might use restroom noise.
Yeah.
It's a little bit.
What's that?
I don't know. Oh, I think blowers.
Says what?
I was like, um.
Waters, maybe. Sometimes they're water hammers.
Yeah.
That's the one that I'm using. The bathroom is freezing.
It's warmer than all.
Isn't it warmer? The bathroom? No. But when you come out here, you can feel the difference.
And then that one back here, we might have that little one that I see. But it is a lot warmer than one of those. Yes, that was to show the equipment. Cause when the abrasion was down here, it was. They had all of their equipment, the copying machines that made it. They made that extra heat. I don't know.
Or they're gonna back that in the open too. But I don't know if they have separate. They put new.
No, they have one, don't you think?
Yeah, seems that's, seems not right this week.
I think the only thing those blowers do is make a lot of noise and they blow the heat down from the pipes that go.
First joke.
I ran around the courthouse. I cannot find my thread.
Okay, well, we'll just do our thing then. He'll be back for sure by noon, cause that's when Gabe was coming, so.
Okay, I'll just let Mark know so then we can tell him.
Okay. Okay, so. Um, executive session, non-elected personnel, thirty minutes, county commissioners, county clerk, and HR.
How long?
Thirty minutes.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at one.
Oh, sorry. She can't, sorry.
Good job.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, eleven oh two AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B one. That the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners, county clerk, and HR.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three. Okay, we are back in open session. While you're down here, uh, we were making some notes on last year's organizational meeting, uh, because that will be Monday. Um, but that, that, that is on a Monday. Okay, um, and we can share these with you, cause we have a couple of questions for HR too. So, do we, we have time? Do we wanna walk through that with them while they're here, just so we're prepared? I mean.
We might as well. And if that way there's anything, questions that they have, or something they need to look up, we'll be ready for any.
And I can send my two conscripts with you, because we kind of walked through it this morning of just like, um, kind of refreshing our brain and, and everything. And we had some committees that we were removing, um, and then a couple we added. Um, so I will give you, give you that. Um, we were wondering with K work, uh, what? We had historically appointed a carrot trustee, so we were wondering if that would be needed with K work. If we still need to appoint a trustee in a, in the alternate trustee. So, a question for us to ask you and you can find out, or? I think it's a smart idea to have too, just in case one is not of it. So it'll be the same process with the trust. Okay. Um, and then renew Memorial Hall trustee, um.
And I would like to mention that I did not get it on. Uh, Facebook. I was gonna get with Jody to get it on our Facebook today.
Okay.
Um, I don't know who to get ahold of for the Legion or. The VFW. If anybody does, I would be more than happy to email them, or I can just walk out there. Um, but I can do that. So if you want to extend the deadline for that interest letter.
Okay.
The letter of interest, just let me know and I can change it on the website and then get everything sent out.
Another VFW has, um, Facebook. Okay, so, um, does that need to be on our organizational meeting, or can we just add that to our, like, another meeting?
We could add it to another meeting.
Okay.
Point somebody. We can't just.
Extend it?
Yeah, okay.
I've been, I've been told that one app can come add us, um. You might ask, you might ask Travis how to get bundles. I think, I think Fred Gage is one of them, and Chuck Pickman's the other one as far as contact. I think.
No, both.
But I know if you start with those guys, they'll know who to call.
Perfect, perfect.
Cause when I was doing the Lincoln thing, I had to talk to them.
Okay.
And they were.
See him here as well, yes.
Yeah, probably one called him. Be one of those guys will get you.
Perfect.
Which name?
Thank you.
And then.
Also a question on the solid waste. How often they have to meet? They say we had a meeting in a long time.
Yeah, I can check with Stacy or actually read my plan. It'll probably say in there.
Okay.
Um, and then we got a list of the twenty twenty four holidays proposed. And we were discussing. Christmas Eve, um, in comparison to federal holidays and things and all of the things, so. We may have questions for you on that. Um, and then the Columbus Day employee training. Uh, we were gonna visit with you, um, about some maybe new ideas of how to maybe alter that this year. Um, maybe drill down to maybe more just department-specific, uh, trainings so that people feel. You know, they get something out of it, um, a little bit more, so we'll visit with you about that. Um, because this is just approving the date really. Uh, so, and then we had discussed, we're still kind of thinking on the work session meeting dates. Would like to have quarterly meetings at a later time, impossible at a remote area. We put that on last year, but I don't think we really did. So we'll probably just take that off. Um, it seems to be working fine, like when we have to meet a different time, uh, we have. But, uh, we were wondering about, we had discussion of joint meeting with all cities in the county. Um, and then the joint meeting with the townships. So the township meetings have been fantastic. Joe has always set those up. We were wondering, we were wondering how it would be to possibly just do an annual meeting and invite the municipalities to the township meeting? Because we have a great turnout and if they wanna come, they can. It, it gives us kind of a chance for once a year to, to get together and many of them, like Lancaster and the township of Lancaster, like, there's in our workings anyway, so they might be. So that was just an idea that we kind of threw out, um. And then dates for the organizational, everything else was pretty much just check, check, like whatever the current rates are and all the things, um, cost of copies.
Cell phone reimbursement rates, pretty typical standard industry.
That's been.
We haven't changed it.
It's a similar one of the counties and cities, dude. I just don't know. Just curious.
Yeah.
The membership placement, I don't know.
Yeah, no. Is there, it says something about budget calendar. Has that been?
I was gonna ask that. Was Mark gonna do the budget calendar for us, or are you doing the twenty twenty four budget calendar, or?
Um, I started a budget calendar, but I have a lot more clerk items on there than what you probably want on here. So I'll get with Mark, we'll have something.
Awesome, because I think we talked after last year, we wanted to even move it up a little bit earlier than what we did last year, which we moved it up earlier last year, but. So, um, and actually, he sent out an email, I think, to department heads, letting him know we're gonna start this process earlier, so. That will be, I'll get with him today. And then real opportunity zones, just an updated resolution. And then your election date, so, uh, yeah, that's kind of. What we came up with. If you want my scratch notes.
I'm gonna add on that list, uh, our department head reviews or performance evaluations.
Yeah.
Maybe just kind of discuss that in general.
Yeah, we should. It would be nice to have a target date for everybody. I feel like it'd be good for our department as a of us, so that we can make sure we don't get to January and not happen.
Since you're talking about, discuss the budget a little bit with that, so then might be a good time to have a conversation with each of them.
Okay, so department head reviews.
I did have a question, um, about the safety day. Would you like me to have the safety committee officers, um, on the board? Cause they're the ones, the whole safety committee is the one that plans that day. Would you like the officers to be there?
Yeah, sure. Um, okay. Which, I guess, necessarily not for the organizational meeting, but maybe we can put that, put as a topic for discussion, like if, cause we have till October. But like a planning session where we can get together and like, give feedback, receive feedback, all the things of trying to make it as successful as possible based on.
I don't know if, if all the department heads and elected officials were contacted, it's like, if you had something that day you would like to see. What, you know, and maybe you've done that. Okay.
Yeah, so our conversation kind of stemmed from many directions as far as, like, feedback from this past year was, you know, people were taking vacation days to avoid it. Um, and then talking about, well, historically it used to be mandatory, but then when it's mandatory and we're closing services that are needed by people, then that doesn't work either. So then we opened up solid waste because City of Atchison and Martins needed. You know, and that was the department has choice to work because she needs to service her, her people. Um, but also like visiting with Kaylia this year with all the elections. She needs to be focused on her needs, right? So like, and then we were thinking, well, if it's departmentalized more. I mean, leadership training, professional training, like all those things could be a cohort type thing, but like, then if it drills down to something more relatable in their department, it might. Ignite them to want to participate more than trying to take a vacation. I don't know, we're just, I know there's a lot of, yeah, we were just brainstorming of. And I know everybody does a great job of brainstorming and trying to make it better each year, so we just, we were just chatting this morning about that and, uh, wanted to just have that conversation with you. Um, but yeah. Verification of spending. Um, we hit, we do have verification of spending on here, which if we're just gonna keep that the same, I know we talked about it for chairman policy, but we can always.
Get that updated and get an email back out to you guys.
Yeah. Awesome, thank you. So then we'll still do nine to ten, just like normal, and then start at ten. And then until the organizational chart. That'll just be an item on our agenda and then other items.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to remember how I ever start this, um. Right away at ten fifteen, if there's, if there's nothing else on the agenda.
And that'll be Monday.
Monday.
January.
Yes.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, you don't need anything. I'll go back up.
So, I think we're good. Thank you. Um, so. Any unfinished business?
Okay. I can't think of anything. They get an email from the hospital on the grant. They got it.
Oh, they did?
But I was, it's, it's doing the quarantine thing and I've released it and still showed my number, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
So once I figure it out, I'll forward it to you.
That's the one that we were the conduit for?
Yeah, they're putting up.
The five million?
Yeah, they're putting up around three point one grand. They got one point, little one, one point five, one point five, one point six.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, we need to make sure.
This rule, hell.
Are you guys good if I draft a gratulatory card for that guy that came? I mean, that's awesome. That's.
R H I G grant.
Can you send us a copy?
I've been trying.
Okay.
It's, since it's released, but it's just showing up, so.
That's awesome.
I have to do a, uh, shout out to Wes to fix my quarantine again. It's probably me.
Okay, um, I was just gonna run through our remaining items and then put you on right before Gabe, if that's okay. Unless you wanna go.
Well, that's.
Okay, uh, county counselor updates, Mr. Henderson, are you on?
Hello, I'm on, um. I don't really, well, um. From Insign Group, I got back just communication from them that they're looking at the contract draft that we sent them and, um. Last week, he said he expected to have something back to us this week, so. Not really anything to update, only the, only the acknowledgement that the ball's in their court, I guess. Uh, that's all I have.
Will we need to have some kind of action on Monday of our next meeting, or do we need a special meeting or anything like that?
Well, I think it really depends on what the. What the, uh, changes they're suggesting are, if any. So, I mean, yes, we'll, we'll need to take some action on it. To approve it, but whether, what form that would take, I think really depends on. Uh, the substance of the changes.
Okay, um, thank you. Any need for any more executive sessions? Not that I'm aware. Uh, last week, you said you might need one for fifteen minutes this week. Do you need?
Uh, uh. I, I guess I would, I would like one just for fifteen minutes max.
Okay. Uh, fifteen minutes puts us at, maybe, so if you wanna do that.
Probably. Probably attorney-client, right? That can be, you can get him on a. By the page. Is it just?
Right.
Great government, big name.
Three commissioners and that?
Uh, yeah.
And for fifteen? I'm going to the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at eleven forty six AM for consultation with an attorney for the public body. Which would be deemed, releasing the attorney-client relationship is allowed by KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room in the courthouse basement. And those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Henderson, county commissioner.
Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Okay, we are back in open session. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the expenses this week?
So, yeah, say.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Uh, Joe, do you wanna do a department update?
Yeah, I've got, got one question that I would, or I wanna bring to you guys' attention. So, Cheyenne Road is on our road plan this year. What, we need to look at Cheyenne Road and decide what we need to do with Cheyenne Road to make it. Are we gonna make it gravel? Are we gonna make it chip and seal? Or are we gonna fix? What we're gonna do with it?
Is that the one we took the trip, drive on and it was half and half?
Yeah.
Just a county.
Yeah.
It was like super hard.
Hundred sixty. Yes, so, but that's, that's a road that, uh, uh, we need to really look at what we think we're gonna do with that road. I think I've got a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars figured in just trying to chip seal and stuff, but that's, I think. Excuse me, but that's something we need to look at. I just wanna bring it to you.
Is that a good route for that base one?
Well, that's, that's some other things that I'm looking, looking into is a base one, or there's another option. But.
That road with what was done and it's so hard, wouldn't that be a good one to, to just chip and seal? Because we've already, I know, when they tore them sections up, they incorporated a lot of that stuff in, anticipating that they were gonna go back with chip and seal. So that's the reason the road is so hard. They already prepped for them.
Right.
Can we take advantage of?
Well, I think so, but I also think, do we go in and do we mill all the millions into the rest of the road and fix the whole road at once instead of? Fix part of the road and leave the rest the way it is. There's a narrow bridge down there by, or box culvert dinner by, uh, Glenn Richards.
Mm-hmm.
That, or these are things that we try to address and take care of one road at a time instead of if we can make it work. If I'm making, if, you know, like, we're starting on the gravel roads right now. And we're cleaning the ditches and we're putting culverts in and we're gonna finish these roads. And that's something we're gonna continue to work on throughout the year, uh, if we can make it work. So this would be our last year, I believe, on the five-year. That we've been through, cause we added some to help us through the one year.
Mm-hmm.
Do we wait then for that for next year and say if it's gonna cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile, we do three miles of it and that road's done?
Yeah, I think we.
I mean.
Kinda look at.
Right, but I wanna, I would just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. How do we wanna address this? Do we want to, uh? Because the whole road needs something done to it.
It's a traffic count. It's a very high.
I don't know, we'd have to, there's several houses on it, but I can't tell you.
That's pretty good artery.
Yes, it is, but because the road over for them to get to, to, uh, Coal Creek Road or whatever, Jefferson County, they come down that road, because the other one's dirt.
I would love for that to be connected and be a cutoff. If Jefferson County ever finished there.
Yeah, but just something for us to, uh, food for thought for this year. Is it something we try to budget into next year to fix the whole thing? Or is it something we go in and we? Kind of the patch and not really.
Have that as gravel.
I think it's about half and half. Like, there's three, there's three miles there and I think it's about a mile and a half, a mile and a half.
Thought about talking to Jefferson County if they'd be willing, or whether to be, step or give up on our part, they'll, would get theirs better? So work that conversation.
Well, I can talk to them.
And they might say that roads are, are ten-year plan and we're in year one.
Or is it, or is it, or is it something that we just, you know, do we, do we mill it up and, and make it a good hard gravel road or a chip and seal?
Makes it easier to spend more money on, they're gonna fix it up.
But I just wanted, I wanted to bring that up. I was just looking through my plans and seeing where we were. And once we get through this year, other than Ottawa Road and of Osborne. Which we have a plan for it, uh, do we wanna go in on these roads? And fix so many mile, you know, fix this road section? And then we're good for several years, and then we'll still try to patch the ones that need it. But we are running into more of those slides and, uh, when I did the, uh. PMS, Payment Management System, uh. The information I gathered was we're probably gonna have to mill some of that up at some point to stop that, because it's just, it's been something that's been done over time and over time. It's not gonna stay like we'd like to.
I'd like to see it remain a chip and seal road. I think. If that's the avenue we're gonna go is to tear up roads, I mean, that would have to look at other roads the same way that we would. Instead of keeping them up, we're gonna tear them up. I just think we're going backwards if we start.
Well, and that's what I'm talking about doing. You know, if we mill all that into, into the road or. Get the right information from the right, from the engineers, uh, what we need to do, you know, but. Can we rehabilitate and fix the whole thing as to doing this partial stuff that's been done for years? Is, is my point. But I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. That, that's something we'll have to talk to them about at a workshop or something. And that should be it.
Okay. All right, I would look for. Let's see, any public comment? None, look for a motion to adjourn into a workshop.
Sure. Say.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We will adjourn. Well, we'll be into a workshop.